Good evening. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee. It's now called to order. I'm Danielle McCray, Chair of the Committee and the Councilwoman for the 2nd District. In attendance, we have Councilwoman John Bullock of the 9th District. We also have
Thank you.
We also have Councilwoman Felicia Porter of the 10th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We also have Councilman James Torrance of the 7th District. And we have Councilman Isaac Yizzi Schleifer of the 5th District in attendance from the Committee this evening. From the Mayor's Office, we do, thank you. From the Mayor's Office, we do have Nina Themelis. Thank you for joining. And also from the Council President's Office, we have Nikki Thompson here today. Last in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, Staff to the Committee. And before we get started, I just have just a couple of ground rules. I'm just going to ask you to please stay muted until you are recognized by the Chair. That you do mute yourself when you are not speaking. That before you speak, please identify yourself, the agency or organization that you are with, and also your position. Please speak slowly and clearly. And after you are finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you are recognized by the Chair. We do ask the Committee members and city agency officials, keep their video on for the duration of the hearing unless there are technical difficulties preventing you from doing so. This is for transparency, so members of the public know that we are listening and paying attention. And last, for members of the public, there will be an opportunity for public testimony. And you will have about three-minute seats for testimony. Today, we are here for City Council Resolution 21-0044-A, informational hearing, COVID-19 and mental health. For the purpose of inviting representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, and members from the Baltimore City Healthcare Community to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the financial, physical, and social impacts that COVID-19 has had on the mental health of Baltimore City residents and what resources are available to help people cope and recover from this trauma. The hearing format today is as follows. We're going to have presentations from the City Health Department and Behavioral Health System Baltimore. Then we will hear from Director Edwards from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. That's going to be followed by Teva Simon, a mental health educator. After that, Committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then we're going to move on to public testimony. COVID-19 has had devastating impacts on the mental health and wellness of Baltimore City residents. Living through this pandemic, our residents have endured financial, physical, and social uncertainty. They have endured the indefinite periods of isolation and loneliness and the grief that has come with the death of over 900 Baltimore City residents to COVID-19. That uncertainty and hardship has led almost vulnerable to accruing increasing levels, increased levels of depression, insomnia, and stress. And we know that poor mental health can also lead to adverse physical health, including higher risks of mortality and increased levels of inflammation that can lead to chronic health conditions. As city leaders, we must continue to take every action that we can to ensure that our residents know that they are not alone and that we are, in fact, in this battle together. I am grateful to be in community with you all today to discuss the state of mental health during the COVID-19 pandemic, what resources are currently available, and what response measures we can implement to tackle this issue. I also do want to state that we have been joined by Councilman Mark Conway of the 4th District this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're now going to hear from our presenters for this evening. Committee members, I'm just asking that you please hold your questions until we have heard from all of our speakers. And we're going to start with the Department of Health. And thanks, everyone, for your patience. Our Department of Health is loading their presentation at this time.
So I'm loaded. I assume you guys could not hear me. I was on mute, so I will start over. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Chair McCray, for this opportunity to talk about the work that the Health Department is doing, as well as talk about some general background on mental health. Also, thank you to your fellow council members and members of this committee for this opportunity to share the work that we're doing. So, as a brief 50,000 city residents have contracted COVID-19. Additionally, almost 1,000 residents have lost their lives as a result of this disease. And we all know that COVID-19 has affected all of us in different ways. Certainly, there are individuals who are experiencing grief from the loss of a loved one. There are individuals who may have lost their job or experienced income loss or decreased in overall hours. Some residents, we know, experience homelessness as a result of COVID-19, as well as just general food insecurity and challenges with resources. All of these things, which could have exacerbated underlying chronic health conditions, as well as underlying mental health challenges. When we look at the research, it shows that four in 10 adults in the U.S. have reported signs or symptoms of depression or anxiety. And this is a study done in January of 2021. This is compared to 1 in 10 adults showing or expressing signs or symptoms of anxiety or depression in January 2019 to June of 2019. So obviously, we've seen this marked increase in adults who are experiencing signs and symptoms of depression. So backing up a little bit, when we think about stress and general stressors, stress is a natural, physical, and emotional reaction to our life experiences. At some point, everyone will experience stress. And this can be anything from just managing our day-to-day responsibilities to managing the uncertainty associated with the global pandemic. Stress particulars actual biological responses in us. So there are hormones that are actually released when we are under stress. And prolonged or chronic exposure to stress can lead to the development or exacerbation of underlying comorbidities or health issues, like heart disease, high blood pressure, stroke, and diabetes. Additionally, stress manifests in different ways. So a lot of us have external reactions to stress. So it could be feelings of fear, anger, worry, numbness, or frustration. Some people have increased in appetite. Some people have decreased in appetite. Changes in energy levels, again significantly decreased energy or increased energy even in some instances. Difficulty focus or concentrating, so having a hard time making decisions. Challenges sleeping, not sleeping enough, sleeping too much. These can also be just a part of our normal reaction to stress. Some people experience somatic symptoms like headaches or stomach problems. Some people have worsening of their underlying health conditions. And those that have underlying mental health conditions to begin with, those can often be exacerbated or worsened during periods of stress. Additionally, individuals turn to certain substances to help cope with stress. So we often hear this term self-care as well. I think this is a term that's thrown around quite a bit. But I want to be very clear that as we're thinking about self-care, self-care really should be a normal part of your daily routine, right? In your daily routine, you should be thinking about ways to incorporate self-care. It is not an emergency response plan. It is not a replacement for seeking additional support as needed, especially in times of significant stress where that additional help is required. There are eight kind of general areas of self-care. So there's certainly the physical self-care of having a healthy diet, sleeping enough, exercising, drinking enough water. There's a psychological component of having time to journal and document your thoughts and your feelings. Or having, from an emotional perspective, having someone to share those feelings with if that's helpful for you. There's also just the social areas of self-care, so creating boundaries in your life. You know, being able to say no when you're invited to events if you're not feeling up to it. There's the professional elements of throughout your workday, taking time to step away, take a deep breath, and return to the work if it's becoming highly stressful. Certainly, there's the environmental stress. And again, decluttering your home and how that impacts how you're feeling and how you're thinking. And then there's spiritual. So again, for some people, it may be turning to prayer or meditation. And then financial. So again, managing all of the financial stresses in your life and making sure that you're coping with those things appropriately so they don't add additional stress. So some very quick tips around managing and providing yourself with self-care is again, having that trusted person in your life that you can share your feelings with. Recognizing potential triggers for your stress and trying to avoid those stressful situations when possible. Journaling or recording your thoughts and your emotions. Establishing a routine. So again, for some people, this is extremely important, that it should include exercise. It should include eating healthy and drinking enough water, as well as getting enough sleep. Meditation or yoga, and engaging in breathing exercises. So shifting gears a little bit to talk about some of the work of the Health Department as it relates to mental health and ancillary services. We have two main program areas that address this within the Health Department. Our Office of Overdose Prevention and our Office of Youth and Trauma Services. So when we think about how those offices have been impacted by the pandemic, we certainly saw, especially in our Office of Overdose Prevention, that because of many of the mitigation measures we had to put in place, that initially limited contact with clients, that there was a disruption in treatment and being able to provide those services. You know, many people rely on those services. And there's that social connection that they have with our support that's in the community, and that was lost. In some instances, we could support that through telehealth or other measures or referral to other providers. But we know that there are regular clients that really did rely on us. We're fortunate to have been able to continue our Syringe Exchange Services Program, which is a part of our overdose prevention work. And those individuals have remained in the community throughout the pandemic. Additionally, we saw changes in drug supply throughout the pandemic as well, with more poly substance use noted. So as opposed to, you know, in instances where people had overdoses, it just being one drug. In many cases, it was multiple drugs. Shifting gears to talk a little bit about our Office of Youth and Trauma Services. So again, this office, we're very concerned in the beginning especially about how we could continue to connect and provide services for our young people in the community who were looking to this program as that trusted adult to either provide support or to connect with appropriate mental health services. So we had this fear of additional services, and we did see a big, big request for trauma-informed approach trainings. And the good thing is, many of those things, we do virtually. So we were able to meet those requests. But again, we saw this increase for training requests. And then again, on the next slide, we were able to work very closely with our colleagues at Behavioral Health System Baltimore to continue to provide some support for our young people through messaging campaigns. And again, those that had established mental health services, we could continue that intensive case management virtually to make sure that they were appropriately connected to services. We continued, we had 92 victim service clients, and approximately 60 of them have been connected to or receiving mental health services. And for our Youth Services Advocacy Program, we've connected 15 of our victim service clients with tutoring to prevent them from falling behind in school due to virtual learning. So when we think about very generally and very broadly some of the things that can be done to ensure appropriate services, very important that we have enough mental health service providers. Probably, you will hear my colleague at BHSP talk about just the general shortage, when we think about it, of qualified mental health services providers to support people who are in need. So that is extremely important. Certainly ensuring that our healthcare professionals have the education and feel comfortable. So if we can't get someone to a mental health service provider, can we at least make sure that our primary care providers, who might be more likely to see them, can manage some of the more basic mental health challenges that arise in day-to-day life, like depression or like anxiety, which are relatively common. Additionally, having trauma-informed responses. So we were excited to see this spike in interest for trauma-informed care training because obviously, as individuals throughout the city are experiencing stress, the last thing we want to do as city agencies is potentially exacerbate that stress by how we engage or interact with those individuals. And then lastly, really, public and private entities working together to increase substance use treatment. So specifically, as we're thinking about community maintenance programs, we've seen success with our mobile buprenorphine van. We've seen success, again, even with mobile methadone. So really being able to bring support to that individual in need within the community. And I think, it's not on here, but certainly telehealth, I think for those individuals that have access, remains extremely important. So such a valuable resource to allow people to receive treatment from the comfort of their residence. And then lastly, very quickly, here is a slide showcasing some of the resources that are available across the city. So Behavioral Health System Baltimore, their Here to Help hotline is available 24/7. I'm sure my colleague will talk about it, but this is an excellent resource for anyone experiencing certainly an acute event of stress or acute crises. But even those that may not be experiencing acute crises, this can serve as a line to connect you with additional services. There's a National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. There's a National Domestic Violence Hotline, as well as a National Child Abuse Hotline. The Health Department also houses in our Aging Services, we have the Maryland Access Point that older adults can call or their caregivers can call to be connected to additional resources. And then we have many service providers throughout the community as well that we've listed that can provide additional support.
And thank you so much, Commissioner Geraza, for sharing that information, especially the resources as well. We're going to move to the Behavioral Health System, Behavioral Health System Baltimore at this time.
That's great. Thank you, Councilwoman McCray, and thank you to members of the Committee for holding this hearing. I'm Adrienne Bridenstine. I'm the Vice President of Policy and Communications at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. What we're going to do is go over some of what the response has been from the Public Behavioral Health System during the COVID pandemic and then build upon a little bit of what Dr. Geraza has covered in terms of what resources are available out in the community. Before I start, I'd just like to take a moment to allow my colleague Keisha Winston-Watkins to also quickly introduce herself.
Okay, there I go. Good evening, everyone. My name is Keisha Winston-Watkins, and I am the Associate Director of Adult Services at Behavioral Health System Baltimore. I come in with, being a licensed clinical social worker, with a little over 15 years of experience working with adults, both with substance use disorders and mental health disorders. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks, Keisha. There we go. So for those who don't know us, Behavioral Health System Baltimore is a nonprofit, and we serve as the local behavioral health authority for Baltimore City. So in that role, we oversee the full range of prevention and recovery and support services for mental health and substance use services in Baltimore City. We have a couple of core functions. We manage public funds for the state of Maryland. We are a collaborator and work with many local partners, such as the Health Department, law enforcement, the education partners. But then largely, we do a lot of advocacy and system management in our roles, the local behavioral health authority. For some quick state system context, the Public Behavioral Health System is a state-run system. It is largely funded through the Maryland Medicaid Program. There are also a number of services within the Public Behavioral Health System that are not covered by insurance. And those are the types of services that BHSP funds with grant funds from the feds and from the State Behavioral Health Administration. In FY19, the Public Behavioral Health System served over 78,000 people annually. And what you see on the screen is that breakout of how people who utilize substance use services versus those who utilize mental health services. When it's all said and done, that equates to over $510 million in expenditures for the Public Behavioral Health System. BHSP, in our role, we fund, again, those services that are not reimbursable through Medicaid. So their recovery housing, our wellness center, street outreach, prevention services, behavioral health crisis services, and peer support. In FY19, we put out $42 million in the community for a range of these services that you see on the screen. That was around funding 135 organizations, which equated to 353 contracts. The one thing I'll note is, for every dollar that comes into BHSP, about 80% of that goes out into the community for services. So we put as much as the funding as we receive out into the community as possible. So we wanted to cover a little bit with you about what happened when COVID hit the community and what happened to the behavioral health provider community. One thing I want to say, and I think we're all really proud of our providers, is that even when, you know, the shutdowns happened very beginning back in March, none of our providers actually closed. They all remained open. Behavioral health providers are frontline workers, just like those who are in the hospital. So that's something I just wanted to point out. We were able to keep all of our services within Baltimore City operating. They certainly had to make a lot of adjustments. So some of those adjustments, unfortunately, is going to result in fewer people serving to the Public Behavioral Health System because of social distancing measures and needing to isolate people when there was an outbreak, for example. So residential providers, for example, like our Mental Health Crisis Service Providers that operate mental health crisis beds or detox bed, they essentially cut their capacity in half. They typically have shared rooms with two people per room. And because of COVID, they could only have one person per room. So that reduced our system capacity to serve people in detox and crisis beds, also in other kinds of congregate living settings. We saw that happen as well. You'll hear a little bit more from Keisha on this, but one of the benefits that I think we're going to see come out of this pandemic, and Dr. Geraza mentioned this as well, is broader use of telehealth and telephonic platforms. When the pandemic hit through the emergency order, one of the things that our state behavioral health department did very quickly was take advantage of the waiver that allowed the entire system to move from what was traditionally seeing people face-to-face to using telehealth and then relaxing a little bit of those HIPAA requirements that allowed them to use different types of non-HIPAA-compliant telehealth platforms. One of the things I'll note that has been extremely beneficial for the public behavioral health system providers in terms of telehealth is that being reimbursed for telephone calls to connect with people is one of the forms of telehealth that was permitted. It is one of the forms of telehealth that will be allowed to continue for at least the next couple of years due to legislation that passed the Maryland General Assembly. That's really important, just because a lot of people in the public behavioral health system that have served are still using things like flip phones and don't have iPhones or, you know, FaceTime, things that many of us have. So being able to pick up the phone and check in with their therapist through just a phone call was really beneficial for a lot of our providers and allowed people to stay connected to their caregiver. For opioid treatment programs in the city, we worked with them to set up methadone home delivery process so that people could have access to their medications at home instead of having to come in to the program to get their daily dose. We also worked to make sure that people have access to their medication while they were in isolation sites. Crisis services continued to operate in the community. That included everything, even though it was at a reduced capacity for mental health crisis beds. Our hotline continued to operate. Our mobile crisis teams continued to operate out in the community. And then finally, I just want to highlight that even school-based mental health services were able to continue to operate because of that added benefit of telehealth. We did experience a number of outbreaks over the course of this past year at our provider locations. We were able to partner very closely with the Health Department to assist providers to make changes to their internal operations. Over the course of the year, we received 109 reports from behavioral health providers of a COVID outbreak. So 109 over the course of this past year, and still counting. One of the challenges we experienced very early on, and this, I'm sure, will come to as no surprise, is access to PPE. It was not available for anyone, and especially not available to behavioral health providers. We were fortunate enough to work with the state Health Department to get a really small supply of PPE early on and were able to get that out to the provider community. But we certainly had to prioritize and in some ways ration as to where it could go. That issue seems to have resolved. PPE is now available, and our providers are able to get it through their normal ways. But we also still keep a supply to support providers in case they need access to that. Because having additional PPE on hand has been an added expense that providers typically have not had to, they keep PPE, but not nearly at the inventory that they've had to because of the pandemic. And also responding to outbreaks, as I said, we partnered closely with the Baltimore City Health Department, and the Health Department would go out to our provider locations and work with them, doing contact tracing, also working with providers to make any types of changes that they might need to make to further prevent and mitigate outbreaks. And then the last thing we were able to do is we developed a peer support network to ensure that people who were in those isolation sites actually had access to supports and maintained their recovery while they were in isolation. Another really important thing, and this has been an ongoing thing, is communication and outreach. So early on, to keep our providers abreast of all of the changes that were happening, which seemed to be almost weekly or daily at that time, we would convene our providers for weekly check-ins and update them on the changes that were coming to federal guidance and state guidance. We have continued those check-ins even to this day to support the provider community. We have used our website as a resource for putting COVID-specific information on there, but it's also a resource where we have guided people to find tips for taking care of their health. What you see on the screen is one of the tools that we developed in collaboration with the City Health Department. It was a flyer and one-pager and used for social media and a variety of different platforms to help put out into the community messaging for ways that people can continue to support their overall emotional health while they were at home and feeling isolated and a bit disconnected. We developed these one-pagers for a variety of different target populations, including immigrants, older adults, youth, and then peers that are out in their community. Some of the trends that we're continuing to see and hear from our community outreach, and Keisha will talk about this in a bit, is just there's this growing need for support out in the community. Some people are looking for more formal support from behavioral health providers, like an expert, but some people are just looking to connect and want a mentor or a peer that can support them. So I use that term "support" in the broadest sense possible, but we are hearing from our outreach teams and our community engagement coordinator that that is a growing need out in the community, which I think is just going to further grow the longer we stay in this. Grief has been something that people have been experiencing. And then finally, we know that people are looking for resources. And in particular, in Baltimore City, we have heard from our community members that they're looking to connect with a therapist that looks like them. So our African-American community wants to connect with a black therapist. And that's something that we are looking at and understand and want to try to look at to support the community. You heard Dr. Geraza mention the Here to Help hotline. This is one of the most comprehensive resources we have in Baltimore City. It is a 24/7 hotline that can assist people with a variety of concerns and issues. It receives over 40,000 calls annually. We expect that to be a lot more over the course of this year. And I'll show you some data to support that in a second. But people can call the Here to Help hotline if they are experiencing a crisis. That could be anything from suicidal ideations to just wanting to connect with someone and talk to them if they're feeling grief in that moment. They can call to get information about programs. Our hotline counselors are trained and know how to do screenings and assessments, risk assessments, over the phone. And then if they do find that there is a need to have a mobile crisis team come out, the hotline can deploy that mobile crisis team to go out into the community and support somebody. And then the finally thing that is a great thing our hotline does is when people do call experiencing a crisis or some kind of acute need, the hotline will follow up with them over the next 24 hours and 48 hours to make sure that they're connected and still doing okay. So one of the things that I think is sort of giving us some insight So, one of the things that I think is, uh, sort of giving us a, some insight into the mental health of the community is that we have seen, is the call volume to the hotline. We have seen an over a hundred percent increase in calls to the Here to Help hotline from this time last year, and you can see that jump, um, by looking at this graph. Our hotline call volume was on average around twenty-seven hundred calls per month. It is now at five thousand calls per month, and it has remained around five thousand, um, since almost April of last year. We have heard from our hotline that people are calling, um, or we've heard from our hotline counselors, people are calling and there's, our counselors are actually spending more time on hotline calls, um, trying to, uh, help with people with de-escalation and help them connect and help them process. So, um, that's kind of an interesting trend too, that I think is giving us some insight into our community mental health. Um, our crisis providers are finding that they're spending more time in the, on, on these calls, and this can be just an indication that people are having more complex needs and they're looking for someone to talk to, just given the current, the current pandemic. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Keisha.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, again. Um, so I want to talk about the, um, immersion pandemic concerns and then some lasting impacts of the, um, pandemic. And one of the things that we do know is that, you know, we know that this pandemic disrupted our entire way of being. It made us create a new normal, and one of those new normals is the importance of our mental health, ensuring that our mental health is and stays a, a top priority. And one of the things that we do know with human behavior is a lot of times when a tragedy happens, we may utilize a, a, a couple or few, um, healthy coping skills to get us through that tragedy, get us through that, that traumatic experience, and then sometimes we may revert back to our regular routine. But one of the major lessons that from this pandemic is that we cannot return to the status quo as it relates to prioritizing mental health. And one of the things that we cannot ignore as we transition to a post-COVID world or community is that the ongoing anxieties and fears compounded with historical unresolved traumas. So with that, we know that many Baltimore City residents have historical unresolved trauma, history of abuse, neglect, assault, unresolved grief, and, and a lot of times untreated mental illness. And with this pandemic, it heightened a lot of that anxiety and those depressive symptoms that the, um, health commissioner spoke of. And we also know that domestic violence assaults and substance use-related deaths increased during this pandemic. So now, as we're starting to open up, one of the unsaid messages that a lot of people are hearing is that, okay, um, the anxieties and fear should subside, but that is far from the truth, um, as we start to, to move into this post-COVID, um, world. And with that, the unresolved, um, anxieties and fears is that a lot of people are, um, have, that they are unknown about their financial futures. We know that many businesses, small business in particular, will not recover from the pandemic. We know that a lot of our, um, residents, um, that had moratoriums on rent and mortgages and utilities are being lifted, meaning that many may be evicted, they may, um, have home foreclosures and, um, may not be able to pay their utilities. So all of that is heightened, um, put on already existing, um, fears and anxieties. And then they are so worried about their immediate futures, about themselves and their family. Many, um, residents, I mean, citizens are also have hesitancy with the vaccines. Um, as we know, many people already have historical mistrust about healthcare systems and institutions, and now they are uncertain about how to navigate with this vaccine. Should they get the vaccine, and then also if their jobs may be requiring uncertainty, if, if their job may require them to get the vaccine. And then there's, um, confusing messaging about the mask mandates. So all of this going on, um, and then also is compounded with fears and anxiety. So it's feeding those anxieties and fears, and then also grief. Uh, many, um, individuals lost loved ones during this COVID, um, where they may not have been able to properly, um, lay to rest their loved ones, may not have been able to say goodbyes when they were in the hospital. So a lot of people may have unresolved grief, and then also the digital divide. Many parents, um, had anxieties about access to broadband while their children were in school or if they were, um, were mandated to, um, telework. Uh, you can turn to the last slide. So it's a lot of ongoing, um, anxieties that this pandemic really just compounded and down is, okay, now what do we do? So I think one of the ways that we can do is continue to message it about vaccines. Um, making sure that people understand and are educated about the vaccine. Um, continue the use of telehealth, and there are some pros and cons to telehealth. So the pros is that it does, um, address the barrier to access to behavioral health. So we know that during this pandemic, um, if it was not for telehealth services being allowed, that many individuals may not have stayed connected with their mental health provider. Um, so now that, um, there are, um, expansions with the telehealth, that does increase access. But we know that not everyone is clinically appropriate for telehealth services. Um, during this pandemic, I supervised, um, clinicians and we had some, um, clinicians that were working with children that already may have, um, attention deficit. So they may not be appropriate for telehealth services. You may have individuals that may have experienced psychosis or delusions that may not be appropriate for, um, clinical, for, um, telehealth services. So one of the things that we can do, I believe, to support, um, healthcare providers is, um, one, and I'm shifting from the, the, um, PowerPoint, is one, is making sure that providers are screened, um, are trained to appropriately screen for telehealth services. Telehealth services should not be, it should be just another tool as, as it relates to access in telehealth services, I mean, on behavioral health services. We also want to support our behavioral health providers to make sure that they are, um, certified to provide telehealth services. So that means making sure that they have the proper equipment, uh, making sure that they are using the HIPAA compliant video platforms to ensure, um, PHI. Um, and then also, again, we want to make sure that we normalize people's feelings about going back into the community. We want to make sure that we understand and are empathetic and supportive to individuals about their concerns, um, about re-entering into the community post-COVID and understand that the pandemic is really just another form of trauma that we've all experienced. And, and with the support, I know we talked about the Here to Help line, so making sure that, um, if individuals don't feel competent enough to support, um, their loved ones, that there is an avenue such as Here to Help, the Here to Help, um, Help Hotline for individuals to get their needed support.
Thank you, Keisha. Um, so, you know, in, in conclusion, um, we also wanted to share some community resources, which I'm, you've heard a lot about the Here to Help hotline, but, um, I think, uh, with, you know, Dr. Drazza's presentation and ours, um, you're probably getting the sense that this, um, the COVID pandemic is evolving into what we are expecting to be the next kind of crisis, which is a behavioral health and a mental health-related crisis. So ensuring that people have access to the community resources and are aware of the community resources is a big, um, thing that we'll be focused on. We welcome the partnership with the city council, um, to help spread the word about these resources. What you see on the screen, we also have in a flyer format, and we'd be happy to share with you. Um, but as we mentioned, the, the most comprehensive resource is the Here to Help hotline, and there's the phone number up there. But we also have the Maryland Crisis Stabilization Center, which is over in the West Side. Um, it can provide walk-in recovery support services for people who are, um, under the influence of alcohol or drugs. And then we have a number of partners, NAMI Metro and Maryland Coalition of Families that provide, um, peer support services for caregivers and family members, which is, um, something I think we could all benefit. I mean, I had to take my kid to the emergency room yesterday, and I still have to deal with that trauma. Um, I could use all kinds of family support, so it's something I think we all would benefit from, but we would really welcome partnering with any of you to spread the word about these really important resources.
Thank you all so much for sharing, um, this valuable information. Um, we really appreciate, um, your time this evening. We're going to move on to, um, Executive Director Edwards, um, from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and also the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services at this time.
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray. We really appreciate you pulling together this forum for this very important conversation. Um, as you noted, I am here with my colleagues representing both the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success and the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. I would like to defer, uh, to Katie York, who is the Chief of Policy and Partnerships for the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services, to provide our update. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Keisha. Uh, we could move to the next slide, please. Um, so, a, a lot of our other presenters have really touched on, on our key points, um, but I, I can't say enough about the, the impact of COVID nineteen on the people that we're serving here with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. Um, you know, as, as mentioned previously, one of the biggest challenges we've seen across the community is either the, um, reduction in the availability of services or switch to, uh, sort of remote, um, a remote service model that's been really challenging for a lot of the people that we serve. Pre-pandemic, we were looking, um, at a population where about fifty percent of our emergency shelter residents, um, and, and those who are experiencing homelessness unsheltered, were dealing with serious mental health challenges, uh, none of which, uh, are obviously, you know, subject to be improved by, by what's happened through the pandemic. Um, what we really saw here in the community was, uh, as mentioned earlier, a, a system-wide shutdown of those in-person services, um, and a lot of, um, we're just reduction in capacity with our partner organizations. Um, so what became really apparent really quickly are the challenges in particular around the digital divide. Um, so, uh, if for individuals experiencing homelessness, um, saying that you're, you're going to participate in, in a telehealth model is far more challenging, um, than, than just that. As mentioned, um, people may have access to flip phones. They may not have access to a place to charge their phone. Um, and so that, that move away from in-person service delivery was really, um, really impactful for the people that we're trying to serve, and it's, it's, uh, challenges are definitely still resonating throughout the community. Um, i- in addition to that, simple changes, the reduction in public transportation services have made accessing, um, case managers and behavioral health services across the community incredibly challenging for people who are homeless and, and relied on that transport. Um, so not only is there the issue with, um, access to technology and the digital divide around sort of that meaningful participation in case management, um, but also just i- issues of transportation to and from as the city, uh, went through its various phases of lockdown. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so I would like to talk, uh, a bit about our response. So our, uh, first, first response, once we got our CARES Act funding, was to really focus on providing additional operating support and, um, PPE for our frontline staff, both at our shelters and other essential community programs, to ensure that they could continue to operate safely and provide those critical services, uh, especially to avoid as much disruption on that in, in-person service delivery as is possible. Um, we partnered with our, uh, outreach partner, People Encouraging People, um, to add new members for its street outreach team. Um, and that organization specializes in particular around serving people with complex mental health and substance use needs, um, both of which we've seen exacerbated by the stressors brought on through the pandemic. Um, we've also expanded our mental health supports at shelters to ensure we have case managers and mental health service referrals, uh, available for anybody who is in need of those services in our care system. Um, and we've, um, uh, really sought to add additional training for our MOHS staff, um, a- around responding, both recognizing and responding to mental health crises. Um, so we've ensured that staff members have access to training on mental health, first aid, trauma-informed care, and non-violent crisis intervention. Um, and the, the way we've really seen this, uh, payoff in terms of our, our services is is really enabling staff to minimize police involvement, um, when responding to mental health incidents, especially at our shelters. Next slide, please. Um, throughout the pandemic, we've had some really, really fantastic partnerships come up with, um, some community-based organizations. In particular, Healthcare for the Homeless has been able to really step up, um, not only through their telehealth model, but also through the continuation of in-person services at their clinic, um, to ensure that we have widely accessible and equitable access to, uh, mental health services and behavioral health services, um, to really help fill the gap from, um, say, service changes and, and reductions in capacity at providers throughout the community. Um, and we've also partnered with the Baltimore Crisis Response, uh, Team, just to ensure that we can deploy that sort of, um, uh, emergency mental health, uh, response, um, rather than police response as, as we have, uh, crises occur throughout our care system. Um, and as we mentioned earlier, we have people encouraging people, um, that's really providing that, um, trauma-informed care and, and complex mental health response for people who are experiencing homelessness unsheltered. And I think, um, that's, yeah, that's, that's it for our slides. Uh, there is a bit more we can add. Um, again, we, we know nationally that the, the shutdown in, um, the shutdown in services was really across the board. We don't have any figures locally, um, although anecdotally, we know almost all of our providers had to change, um, pretty much last March, it, almost their entire business model as to how they were delivering services in the community. Um, some providers have still yet to regain that capacity or to resume in-person services. Uh, one of our main drop-in centers, for example, is just now in June, um, really reopening for that in-person service delivery. Um, so it continues to, to impact our community and how we're able to off, offer services. Um, we do have some hopefully bright news on the horizon. Um, recently SAMSA announced, uh, an additional three billion dollars would be made available nationally, um, to, uh, to states to offer expanded behavioral health and substance abuse treatment. Uh, but don't have a lot of details at this point, but we are hoping to be able to access and, and really expand the resources we have available for some of our city's most vulnerable residents. So, hope to, to have more information to, to share in the future on that. Um, but that's, that's just about it for us. If there's any, just let me know.
Okay, and thank you. And Director Edwards, I know that you also submitted a report on behalf of the Mayor's Office of, um, Children and Family Success, um, as well. Um, so did you want to touch on that report, or did you just want to stand by that report?
Uh, Madam Chair, we do have a presentation, uh, from Leah Ferguson, um, who is, she is our Chief of Policy and Partnerships in the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and she is prepared to report out to the committee.
Perfect. Thank you, Executive Director.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Um, so as we've heard, um, others who have presented tonight, you have faced, uh, extraordinary challenge in their change in routine, support systems, and social interactions. These changes have led to an increase nationally, and certainly here in Baltimore, um, depression and anxiety for children. Nationally, we've seen children sh- have shown an increased need for emergency mental health services with a twenty-four percent increase in need for psychiatric hospitalizations for youth ages five to eleven. And a thirty-one percent increase for youth twelve to seventeen. We've also unfortunately seen suicide rates and attempts have increased for youth ages ten to twenty-four with social isolation being one of the highest risk factors related to suicide. We also know that the adults caring for our children are facing unprecedented increases in mental health needs. One in three people in Maryland state that the pandemic has left them feeling depressed and anxious. Uh, this has been shared tonight, the behavioral health providers have reported increases in clients accessing services for anxiety services that they tag to loneliness and social isolation. Most children who need mental health services don't receive the care that they need. Services must be made easily available, affordable, and equitable. We recognize that the numbers stated are likely underestimates of the need, and once youth return to school, we may see these rates increase due to... due to increased observations by professionals outside of the home. We, as a city, must prepare to offer not only supports for youth in need, but also social, emotional healing services to prevent long-term effects of the pandemic. Our Office of, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success has been actively engaged in expanding our city's understanding and implementation of trauma-informed care. Our office advocated and strongly supports the Elijah Coming to the City Act as a co-chair for the Trauma-Informed Care Task Force. We also support the Baltimore Children's Cabinet, which has a dedicated priority area and work group for trauma-informed care. In the midst of the past year's experiences with COVID-19 initiatives within MOCFS have deepened our commitment to expansion of trauma-informed care. The Baltimore Children's Cabinet 2021 Action Plan includes the development of a youth-led media campaign to decrease stigma around mental health and raise awareness of mental health services. In partnership with the Healing Youth Alliance and Wide Angle Youth Media, development of content for the media campaign is currently underway. The Baltimore Children's Cabinet also prioritized expansion of screening for adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. Our office and members of the Trauma-Informed Care Task Work Group advocated for state legislation that created a commission that would in part explore the incorporation of ACEs screenings in routine healthcare, such as annual pediatrician visits. In response to the exacerbation of toxic stress among families with very young children, the staff at the Head Start Center is managed within MOCFS, released an RFP that seeks trauma-informed care providers to support the social, emotional, and mental health of children, families, and staff as they return to in-person services in the fall. These programs are seeking a partner to develop a comprehensive, trauma-informed menu of services designed to assist families and staff as we reopen for in-person. MOCFS continues to work closely with our partners, who are often on the front lines of engaging with the city's youth. The Family League of Baltimore recently released a request for application that seeks youth-serving organizations and providing trauma-informed care is among its prioritized goals. We also support the Baltimore City Public Schools efforts and ongoing focus on student wholeness. MOCFS advocated for the additional resource that will come from the blueprint for Maryland's future to increase the presence of community school coordinators and healthcare practitioners at each school, building on the current efforts of the expanded school mental health program. We're also encouraged that community and family engagement around schools reopening plans includes a component focused on student wholeness. The district leadership is seeking family input about where to prioritize student supports. Social, emotional learning, student mental health, school culture and climate, arts and enrichment, and athletics are all part of their plans. This approach reflects an understanding that a broad set of strategies will be needed to address the increased trauma and disconnection that students have experienced this past year. MOCFS is proud of its partnership with a number of community-based organizations who are continuing and growing their great work in the area of mental health services for young people, including Black Mental Health Alliance, Centra Soul, Healing Youth Alliance, Holistic Life Foundation, among many others. We appreciate the opportunity to present to this committee and stand ready to answer any questions.
Ms. Ferguson, thanks so much for your report. Thank you also to the Executive Director and Ms. Yorick as well. I appreciate you all. We're going to move on to Teva Simon. Teva Simon is a mental health educator. She's also a Baltimore city resident, and she's going to speak about her own experiences and the impact of COVID-19. And Teva, whenever you're ready. And I'm sorry, we are unable, we were unable to hear you.
Is that better? Yes, okay. All right, thank you all for your patience. Clearly, my computer and my volume are still adjusting to this pandemic life. We should be used to it by now, this combination. We're like a year and some change in. But again, thank you so much for this opportunity. I really appreciate it. I think it's important to have community input on our current pandemic and how it's affecting us all. So, I'll be as brief as possible. Brevity is key, so I won't be out trying, but that's not to be long-winded. What I'll first say, just a little bit about myself. I am a survivor. I do have a mental health diagnosis. I don't mind sharing. I won't go into a laundry list, but one of my diagnoses is anxiety disorder with agoraphobia. And I'm sure all of you are aware of what that is. If not, I don't mind sharing. Anxiety, of course, is that anxiety. The agoraphobia piece is the fear of large crowds. So, with our current stand on mask-wearing and openings and things of that sort, there is a level of fear and hesitancy as it relates to that. But going back a year, personally, again, you know, I am a survivor, and I'm also a professional. I'm a mental health professional. I have my own business, Walk by Faith Consulting, in which we minister to the entire person. Mental health services, community service, public speaking opportunities, support group facilitations. I'm a peer recovery specialist as well. So, with all of this information, education, and my personal journey, I underestimated COVID-19. I'll just be very clear. I underestimated it. I thought that I had my artillery and stock, and I was armored, and I had all the information I needed from my personal journey, in addition to the education I've received from the classes that I've taken and all these certifications. But COVID said bump all of that because it would take you down to the bear. And that's what it did. Last year consisted of a lot of involuntary isolation. And for the first time, I never thought that those words would be put together. Isolation, but before that involuntary. Most times, all you hear is isolation, which means that it's self-imposed. COVID-19 brought on a level of isolation that I believe, well, I should say for me, in the beginning, I enjoyed it. I'm a creature of comfort. I'm a homebody. Yes, I love hanging out with family and friends, but I also love the comforts of home. So, in the beginning of the pandemic, I was A-OK. I mean, to be able to work from home, to get some rest, to relax, to do things at, you know, my leisure, but still within those, you know, work hours and things of that sort. I was fine with it, being able to bake some cookies while still on a Zoom call. Like, okay, this is great. And as the months rolled by and as time began to continue to go, as time does, all this information, education, and my personal journey, it seemed to not be worth a hill of beans because now we're going into 60, 90, 120 days of social distancing. And my personality is not that of, I can stay cooped up. So, to look out of my window and not see the hustle and bustle of the city, all those things that normally would irritate us, like, why are people, why is there so much traffic? Why are so many people outside? It's like, we went from that to looking out of our windows and almost seeing tumbleweeds as if we lived in an old western or something. It was discouraging. It was just, it brought on a lot of emotions. So, having that separation where no one really felt comfortable having family over, friends over, so there was nowhere to go. I am a mom, and I'm a grandmother. And as I just stated, I'm a grandmother, so my daughter has her own life. So, you know, coming into her home and just barging in like, hey, mom is just going to stay, that wasn't really going to fly either. So, there was that involuntary isolation. You know, the baby bird was out of the nest, and mom was just home. And that took me to a place of humility, really having to reach out to my resources and discuss with folks what it is that I need, discussing with folks, family members, when I would go out to the community, which would really just be limited to the grocery store, making contact with folks, asking them what they need. This pandemic has also brought about great opportunities for me to give back. Yes, my business took a dive. A lot of businesses did. But again, it gave me an opportunity to volunteer with a local ministry, with local missions, to donate food and supplies and things of that sort, to really elongate my arms and reach, so to speak, so that I can have a better connection within my community. What also saved me is my family. As much as there was a level of distance, I just had that personality where I'm going to call you. I got to know that you're okay. So, I'm just going to call, I'm going to text. That's what I'm going to do. And with my daughter, there was no difference in that. And my grandson was growing up. So, you know, we began to set these dates. We set dates where we would make sure we met at a local university downtown, and we would just do a walk. And that became something that I did every week. And it's something that truly kept me grounded. I mean, as you guys can see, my face is lighting up. My eyes are getting bright. My cheeks are up to my eyes, just thinking about my grandson and my daughter because those two, they really helped me in this journey of rediscovery, of what I need to do to get back into me and be able to provide the services that I provided before the pandemic to others, and also to be able to take care of myself. So, being with family, watching my grandson discover and enjoy life and enjoy the city of Baltimore through his eyes has been amazing. It has definitely kept me grounded. Even the pictures are different. I sent Councilwoman McCray an email today where I showed her the cover of the Baltimore Sun that we did last year and how hot and sad we both looked. No one says it, it's okay. But he was still cute in the picture. And a year later, I mean, the mask is off, and both of us are shining, and we're smiling bright. Like, that is the other side of the pandemic. And we can, you know, push forward and do the best that we can to have a level of self-awareness and empathy. I think as we move forward with this pandemic, one of the troubling things is that I see the expectation of us as residents to just kind of go along to get along. And for me, with a diagnosis, that's triggering for me. It's see, to walk into retail stores where the business owners still require a mask and seeing some community residents becoming to a level of violence all because of a mask request, that's triggering. That's uncomfortable. It's disheartening. It's all of those things. But I'm thinking that I guess that's what's coming along with being on the other side of the pandemic. Saying all that to say and sharing everything that I've shared, I pray that all of us as providers, as elected officials, as simply as human beings, that we never forget, even in our positions, our professional positions, that we don't forget the level of empathy that's needed and the level of self-awareness because even in all of our ED roles and councilmen and women roles and these high-profile roles, we are still human beings. But more importantly, we are spiritual beings having a human experience. And how we treat each other is a pure reflection of who we are. So, again, as we're in these high-ranking positions, I pray that we continue to be the light and the leadership that's needed so that the constituents of this city will begin to kind of fall in line, not in a negative way, but in a more positive way as we move forward to get out of this pandemic. But it requires all of us, all of us. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Thank you so much for sharing your experience and your words. At this time, I want to thank all of our agency heads. I want to thank Ms. Teva Simon for joining us today. She will be able to remain just a bit in case any of our council members have questions, any committee members have questions for her, as well as our agency heads. I am going to open the floor to committee members for questions. And for our committee members, please signal or use the raise hand function if you have a question. I'm going to go ahead and start with questions at this time. And this is for any of our agencies who may or are able to answer this question. What financial assistance or low-cost services for mental health care are available to individuals and families who have lost health coverage during the pandemic?
This is Adrienne. I can weigh in. The public behavioral health system does serve people who are uninsured. Our agency actually does the authorizations for that. So, if you want to call the Here to Help hotline, they can help you with that. Also, if you are, if you've lost insurance that was formally provided through your employer, you're also likely eligible for Medicaid now, which, quite honestly, Medicaid provides better behavioral health benefits than our commercial insurers in this state. So, if people need it, go for it. Healthcare Access Maryland can help you get enrolled in Medicaid. You can enroll anytime if you lost your insurance. And you can also get connected to them by calling the Here to Help hotline.
Thank you. I'm going to move into another question. And Executive Director Edwards, this would be regarding the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. We know that the pandemic has disrupted the delivery of mental health care. And within your agency's presentation and report, it was mentioned that many individuals experiencing homelessness do not have adequate access to technology in order to meaningfully engage in remote services. Does MOHS provide or partner currently with healthcare providers to provide telehealth services where it may be helpful? I know that everyone within a population, it may not be a helpful tool. But do you provide a partner with healthcare providers to provide telehealth services at this time? And is there a plan to expand in the future? And if not, what resources are needed to do so?
Thank you, Chairwoman McCray, for asking that very important question. So, as you've noted and as we commented in our briefing, that this is a really complicated and challenging issue specifically for the homeless community. So, do we have partnerships, existing partnerships with service providers to provide telehealth resources to the homeless population? Yes, we do have some of those partners. We need more. At our shelters specifically, our shelter providers continue to provide onsite support. And if the needs extend beyond what is available onsite, then we do refer our clients, our neighbors, to other partners who can provide more extensive support. In terms of those individuals who are experiencing homelessness and who are unfortunately unsheltered, living on our streets, in our encampments, the partnership with People Encouraging People is really important. We expanded that partnership. We used our dollars, our HUD dollars, to give them more staff because they are really experts in providing mental health services and substance use disorder services to those individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness. As Katie mentioned, Chairwoman, we are really excited that there are new resources coming from the federal government through SAMSA. The details have not been released yet, but absolutely, we need more. And we are very excited that we will be able to tap into the SAMSA resources to further expand our service delivery options. So, it is a challenge. We are providing services where we can, but absolutely, Councilwoman McCray, we need to do more. And we're looking forward to those additional federal resources that will allow us to expand our reach.
Thank you. For other committees, for other committee members, does anyone have any other questions at this time? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and continue with just a few, with just a few more questions. You guys. This would have been for Dr. Girazza, understanding that she did have a few events that were already scheduled. So, we do appreciate her for coming and opening. And now Commissioner Girazza. We do, however, have Mr. DePaul Nibber, who will be able to stand in and answer any health department-related questions. And DePaul, this one is likely going to be for you. Dr. Girazza, she did speak about services shifting to virtual. Can you speak about how we are bridging the gap for populations who do not have access to technology?
That's a very good question. So, our Office of Youth Violence and Trauma Prevention, they tend to work virtually in our communities. And unfortunately, I don't have specifics as to whether or not they are the providers of the technology in question. I would absolutely have to check in with them to make sure they are essentially helping to bridge that technological gap there. And then with substance use disorder, I know that our staff are actually going out into the field and doing a lot of work there. So, we're essentially meeting people where they are. So, I understand that, you know, that there's still a technological divide there as well. And there may be some work that we're doing around that. But again, I'd have to check up with our staff around that particular question.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nibber. And I would just ask, can you just furnish the information? Once you follow up with your staff, can you just provide the information to the committee? I'm gonna move on to Councilmember Torrance. I do see that he has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is for any of the agencies. Are there any online mental health assessments where a person can take the assessment and then a provider can follow up with them? Because I've seen a lot of cities are starting to use those, especially just to identify that you may have some type of symptoms for mental health disorder or condition. And then it gives you an opportunity for a provider to follow up to do a correct assessment so that persons are like, hey, I may have a problem, let me see. And let's see what the follow-up is from us on our side.
Councilman, this is Adrian. I am not aware of any online tool that we are actively promoting, but but you can call the Here to Help hotline and get an assessment over the phone. And then from there, a person can decide if they would like to get a referral or, you know, what they're gonna do with that information. But that that's one way, the Here to Help hotline is one way to get a referral, or I'm sorry, get an assessment without actually having to go into a clinic.
Thank you.
And to that, I'm sorry, Councilman, did that conclude your questions or did you have any follow-ups?
No, it concluded my questions. I just had a question because I've seen that in, just to give, just add comments. So I see that a lot of our universities and some some small cities are using it as an opportunity to reach young people who maybe have mental health conditions online because often they're online a lot to cope with the pandemic. So it's an opportunity, use advertisements and opportunities to reach them when we directly may not have an opportunity to through the phone lines. Because I understand the phone line meets a lot of my older residents where they are. But with my younger residents, I worry about the fact that we're not displaying the opportunities to them publicly forward-facing, that they see it all the time. It's just like doing a Facebook ad. It's it's those things that that allows us to put it in the forefront, forefront of their mind that they may need some help with coping.
We appreciate you, Councilmen, for adding that. I'm gonna move on to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had two questions related to, similar to Councilman Torrance. As 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 our youth and young adults go back into the school system, can you all speak to different types of wellness opportunities or wellness centers that will be incorporated into the school, the school environment, not only for the youth and young adult that go to that go to the school, but also the surrounding communities as well? I think this is an opportunity for us to really kind of hone in on how we can utilize the school system or the schoolhouse or community center as a way to kind of triage some of those mental health services into the community.
I would just like to offer, Leah, I know we've had some conversations with the school system about their intentions going into the next school year. Can you come to that place?
So I'm happy to also find out more details about this and circle back, but I can share kind of what I'm aware of so far. The school district has already underway what they call an expanded program, which provides mental health services at our schools. I think it covers something like eighty percent of the schools in the district have mental health services available in the school. Now, I understand the the basis of the question is that those needs are gonna be greater and potentially need additional kind of resources and support going into next year. So my understanding is that there's both resources in state recovery funding and federal recovery funding that allows for the expansion of mental health services, including social workers in every school and additional supports. My, what I referenced in the comment or in the testimony about the school districts re-engagement plans with families and community members right now, they call it R3s or Reconnect Reimagin, I believe. But it's part of the reason they're collecting input around where to prioritize the supports is to make sure that they do advocate, they do allocate those resources appropriately, whether it's directly to mental health services or to other versions of enrichment and reconnection that our young people may benefit from as they're returning to school and finding ways to recover from the past year.
Sure. No, I definitely, I definitely encourage that. I would also like to just offer that if we can begin to utilize some of our our practicing or learning or practical professionals at the graduate level at some of these, some of these higher institutions, not only the University of Maryland Medical System, but also some of our historically black colleges and institutions as well. They have, they, you know, they have pathways in order to graduate. They can provide some sort of coalition or some sort of support for mental health, mental health-specific opportunities, not only within the school system, but also staffing opportunities at community, community centers as well. Madam Chair, I have one more question, ma'am.
Yes, you may.
Thank you. The the second question actually has to deal with funding related to funding related to not only mental health resources, but also just making sure that we carve out for suicidal awareness, suicidal awareness programs as well as, and domestic violence programs as well. As as the research has suggested, suicides, whether it be ideation attempts or completions, have gone up within the past two years, but also domestic violence cases, not only inter, you know, inter, inter-partner violence, but also with parent or guardian versus child as well. And so if we can just carve out carve out some of those resources for that important, for that important behavior behaviors, I think that would be helpful as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to circle back just to refer to our colleagues, just to make sure that I'm touching everyone. Councilman Bullock, did you have any questions or did you have any comments at this time, sir?
So, Madam Chair, no questions, but a couple of comments. Again, I do really appreciate the work that folks are doing around this issue. I'm so glad that you're holding this hearing tonight because all of us are going through in our own separate ways. I appreciate the questions. But again, this is something that we're all gonna be dealing with, not only now, but as we get back into the world in terms of this opening and us even being together in City Hall. So again, I think also from the behavioral health point of view, this is very, very important. And I'm glad our colleagues also raised the point in terms of our young people. Because again, you know, as a father, as an educator, I see how a lot of our young people are dealing with it. And as parents, how we have to navigate this space. So again, thank you for everybody's work around this. So thank you for holding the hearing tonight.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to circle to Councilman Conway. I know you don't have your hand raised at this time, but just want to double check to see if you have any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, no questions. Just want to reiterate Councilman Bullock's sentiments. This has been really, really helpful. And I think especially the additional understanding on how some of the mental health issues over the course of the pandemic have changed. And some of the anxieties that we're seeing now are very different from some of the problems that folks were having when they were cooped in. So really, really informative and just want to thank you for pulling together this hearing.
Thank you. And Councilman Schleifer?
Questions at this time? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. I have one more question, everyone. I just want to know, what populations have we seen to be most vulnerable and in most need of mental health resources? I feel like I know a few, but I want to make sure that for anyone who is viewing at this time or will be viewing on Charm TV Citizens Hub at a later date, have this information. Again, what populations have you seen to be most vulnerable and in most need of mental health resources? For example, elderly, low-income, African-American populations? And that question is for any of our agencies.
Madam Chair, I would be remiss if I didn't circle back to your original question about the technological divide, which kind of ties into your your current question. Our older adults are certainly a population we hear about very frequently. And so I feel as though I should reiterate the fact that we have the Maryland Access Point Call Center, which can connect all of our older adults to the services that they need. Again, that's, that number is four one zero three nine six CARE, C-A-R-E. And the actual digits are two two seven three. So that's four one zero three nine six two two seven three. And again, that is the Maryland Access Point, and it is able to connect our older adult populations to any of the services that they might need, especially to cope in these times. Thank you.
Thank you. And for any of our other agencies, does anyone want to answer that question as well from their end?
Hi, this is Katie with Homeless Services. I would just like to follow up on DePaul's comment about our older adults. What we've really seen play out over the course of the pandemic is not only the the question of digital divide, so access to technology, but technology literacy. So for folks that may have, say, access to, you know, a laptop, say, through a shelter or or through to a smartphone, just because they have access to that doesn't mean they necessarily know how to navigate that and connect to services through those platforms. So we have seen some challenges, particularly with our older adults around tech literacy and access.
OK, thank you so much. I want to thank all of our panelists from our agencies to Ms. Teva's, Teva Simon. I want to thank my colleagues. We all know that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. It was very important that, for me, that the HAC Committee did explore this conversation around mental health and COVID-19 at this time. We're going to go ahead and move into public testimony at this time. And the committee staff, which is Matt Peters, he's going to now call on members of the public who wish to testify. For those who are signed and using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate if you do wish to testify, we will start with you. Next, we're gonna go through all of the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called in and cannot be identified by name, you will be unmuted by the committee staff, one by one. You're gonna hear two beeps when you're unmuted. And if you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, that's OK. You simply need to inform us of that, that you don't want to testify after the two beeps. If a speaker is inaudible, you will be directed to call back. And Matt, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You not have any callers and you not have any raised hands yet. Anybody is having trouble finding the raise hand button, you can also use the chat function to let me know.
And thank you, Matt. That will conclude public testimony. At this time, is there a motion for the resolution?
So moved, Conway?
OK, moved by Councilman Conway. Is there a second?
Second, Torrance.
OK. And we have our second from Councilman Torrance. For McCray, this is a yes. For Bullock, Councilman Bullock. We'll come back to you. For Councilman Conway?
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey is absent. Councilwoman Porter?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Torrance?
Aye.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes, yes.
OK. And I just want to come back to Councilman Bullock.
Aye.
OK. So the motion passed six to zero. The committee is going to report the resolution at the next city council meeting. I want to thank everyone for joining us. As Ms., just want to make sure I get all the names right. Ms. Winston Watkins stated, mental health, this is going to be a potential crisis after, long after this pandemic. And this is a topic that we're likely going to be coming back to in the future within the HAC Committee. As Ms. Simon stated, I just want to make sure that we are extending grace and compassion as other presenters, including now my colleague, John. Councilman Bullock stated, we really don't know what anyone is dealing with. So we want to make sure that going forward, in every opportunity that we can, that we're extending compassion, grace, and that we are leading with love. Thank you all for joining tonight. This meeting is adjourned.